Good evening. It's 6:30. We'll call the November 8th meeting of the City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to order. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda that we'll get to after a couple of preliminary items. The first item is public comment. We continue to have a hybrid aspect to our meetings, and public comment can either be in person or through the computer. And I'll check to see if anyone has signed up for a public comment, or anyone online is giving an indication that they want to have an opportunity for public comment.
Chair Joe, no one has signed up prior to the meeting, and we have no online attendees at the moment.
Very good. If you have comments on this topic or any other topic the City Council might be tackling, you're encouraged to send an email to citycouncil@isacua.gov. The council president and deputy council president typically look at those, and send a response out to our email. All right, then, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Have the minutes of October 25th been reviewed by members of the committee? Okay, do you have a motion?
I will move to approve the minutes as attached into tonight's agenda packet.
Second that motion.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries unanimously, 3-0. Approval of October 25th, 22 minutes. All right, that takes us to item ID 1299, the Intelligent Transportation Systems Plan. And I was harkening back to the good old days in 2007, when we had just put up the Intelligent Transportation System. And I remember looking at all the TVs in the monitoring room and marveling at how modern it had become in terms of timing of lights and the way that we were able to meet traffic challenges as they came up. After reviewing the packet for this meeting, I am quite impressed with the advances that have been made, and I'm anxious to hear more about the system. And we have Isabel Diaz, Senior Transportation Engineer with us tonight for a staff report and presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you. I will be sharing my screen very soon. Good evening, and thank you for the presentation, Councilmember Joe. I am, as you have mentioned, I'm Isabel Diaz, the Traffic Signal Operations Engineer, and I will be from Public Works Department, and I will be speaking about the ITS plan objectives. ITS, as we can remember, stands for Intelligent Transportation System, and ITS is the use of data and technology for traffic management, operations, and maintenance. The ITS plan has been identified in the 2022 budget, so that we could look at technology needs across the city, and we could eventually propose ITS projects to be implemented through the plan. Tonight, we will be presenting three key elements of the ITS plan, which include the mission, goals, and objectives. And the purpose will be to be able to prioritize the ITS projects. I'm sorry, to be able to prioritize the ITS objectives. Prioritization of the ITS projects would come later during the development of the ITS The reason why we need to prioritize the objectives is because, as I mentioned later in the plan, we will be developing a list of projects and, and, sorry, I'm blanking here. We'll be developing a list of project and strategies related to ITS. And for these projects, we want to make sure that the objectives that we identify or we finalize, we address these objectives with the ITS projects and initiatives that we will be proposing. And through the process, we have gotten input from stakeholders, and after, based on that input that we got from different stakeholders, we have developed a list of goals and objectives. And what we want to do with tonight's meeting is to get the direction from the committee on what are the top transportation technology objectives that the city should address for each of the ITS plan goals? Or should the city prioritize additional objectives? Just to talk a little bit of what we have done with the ITS so far and what our timeline is. We kicked off the project on April of this year with some assessment of the ITS equipment that we have. And in addition to that, we have gathered public and stakeholder input. And based on this input that we have gotten, we created draft, a list, a draft list of goals and objectives. And that occurred in September. And between September and now, we have, we have gathered the feedback from the Transportation Advisory Board from the TAB, and now from the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, so we can finalize those goals and those objectives specifically. And after we get your input on the top objectives that we should be addressing with the ITS plan, the idea is that we can create this list of projects and strategies by the end of this year. After we create that list of projects and strategies, we would return to the Transportation Advisory Board and also with, to the Mobility and Infrastructure input, the same way that we are prioritizing the objectives. We will then be prioritizing the list of projects that we will be proposing with the ITS plan. After we do that, we will draft an ITS plan, so we can present to the City Council, and that will occur during spring next year. When we, right when we kicked off the ITS plan, we presented to the TAB the overview of the plan and tried to get feedback from them on what, where the top transportation-related data and technology areas that we should be, that we with the plan should be addressing. And the recommendation that the TAB gave, gave us was to get the input from the public on that. And in response to that, we had released a community survey to get the transportation and data technology areas that the community was most interested that the city would be working on through the ITS plan. We kind of divided that areas where we should be investing in ITS in five, in five different topics. And the way that we drafted the survey was to have the community rank those areas from highest priority to lowest priority, in order from highest to lowest. And the data that was selected by the most as the highest priority was traveler information, with 34% of responders putting it as the top priority, followed by safety at signals and performance measures, which accounted for about 25% each of the responders selecting it as the highest priority topic. Now, with public transportation and environmental impact was, were the two areas that were selected the least as the top priority, with 13 and 5%, 13 for public transportation and 5% for environmental impact. From each of those areas, we also, and something I should mention also, that we had, we, the number of responders that we received through the community surveys were 160 responses from, from the communities. And between, in, on each of the areas of the transportation topics that we presented, we also provided different choices or different areas where we could invest on for each specific area. Like, for example, for traveler information, the area, among those choices, the area that was selected the most was travel times. It became very clear that the community was interested in, in the city investing or addressing travel times with the technology data. With safety at signals, the two areas that were of most concern was pedestrian safety, in particular pedestrian crossing conflicts, and the visibility of pedestrians at signalized For the performance measures, and this is one that kind of repeated, because for the performance measure, the measure that was selected as the highest priority was corridor travel times. And for that in particular, we, we also provided different options of performance measures specific to safety. And when we did that, the performance measure, measurement that was selected, selected as the highest priority for safety, and I'll see if I can find that, was the close, what they call the close contacts and intersections. Those areas were focusing on providing technology that would prevent conflicts from happening or crashes from happening, close contacts at signalized intersections. And the one that was selected as the least was, it was actually like red light running. That was the one specific area that they were least selected as high priority inside safety, performance measures that we could look at or evaluate. In addition to the community survey, we have gotten feedback from key internal stakeholder, and also we have identified both internal, several internal and external stakeholders as well to be involved, to get involved with the ITS plan process. From the internal stakeholders, we have identified the Departments of Public Works, Information Technology, or IT, Community Planning and Development, Communications, City Administration, and the police. For external stakeholders, we had identified Isacua Community, Washdod, the city of Samamish, ISIFIRE and Rescue, and King County. Key internal stakeholders also developed in our creation of objectives that we will be presenting later for the ITS plan. After receiving input from both the community, community surveys, and also from key stakeholders, we have developed three, the three components, initial components of the ITS plan, which are the state, the mission statement, the goals and objectives are the ITS plan. And the mission statement that we had identified is to improve the safety, health, security, and movement of goods, people, and services for all modes of the transportation network by using advanced technologies, establishing agency coordination, maximizing existing capacity and infrastructure, and providing real-time traveler information. So this is the mission statement that basically encompasses all the areas that we have seen that were most important for the, that we had addressed with the ITS plan. Goals, in terms of our plan, will be guiding statements that will set the priorities when we implement ITS solutions. And the six goals that we have identified for the ITS plan are to improve safety and security of the transportation system, to improve the efficiency of the transportation system, provide accurate traveler information, implement cost-efficient ITS infrastructure, integrating ITS projects with regional partners, and monitoring transportation performance For each one of the goals, we have created a list of objectives that we could evaluate. And in terms of this plan, the objectives are ways to meet the goals that we have identified. The list, this, all the list of objectives that we were evaluating were presented to the TAB on our October meeting, and we had discussions about all the, the objectives that could be used to meet each one of the goals. And the goal, and on your packet, we have, we have included in the agenda additional objectives that were also considered, but the ones that we will be presenting on these tables are the top three ones, include or encompass the top three ones that the Transportation Advisory Board selected as highest priority for the ITS plan. To improve the safety and security of the transportation system, the three goals identified by the TAB as highest priority were two, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, we have a question, so I'll recognize Councilmember De Michelle.
Thanks, Isabel. So I just needed clarification when I was reading through the packet. Is our task tonight, of the top three goals, is our task to identify what we consider the top goal? Is that for each area? Or are we looking at all six and identifying the top objectives? Are we going to go area by area? Is that the idea?
Yes, it will be at the, at all the six and by objectives, identify what are the top goals. And if, if we need to be addressing or prioritizing another, sorry, another objective, another objective, objective to meet the goals, if we need to identify another objective or prioritize different objectives to be included on our ITS plan, we, we want to hear that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Deputy President Hall.
Thank you. Can you, just before we get into the objectives, can you clarify what is the outcome of prioritizing objectives? Are we going to do all of the objectives, including the additional objectives, and those are just the first ones up? Or can you walk through that?
That is a great question, and is actually the reason why we are selecting, it gets us to the reason why we are selecting a certain number of objectives. And for the, we have identified the six goals, and our, our goal is to meet, to address each one of these goals, but we won't necessarily address all the objectives. And the projects that we will be providing, we want to make sure that, and they could overlap, like a single project could overlap between different objectives and goals, but we want to make sure that we address the top, the top objectives that we identify for the ITS project, plan, ITS plan. Sorry. Thank you. And I don't think I have started yet on the identifying the objectives. Okay, so for the first goal, to improve the safety and security of the transportation system, we had identified the top three goals, objectives as identify near miss collisions, crashes, and mortal conflicts impacting all users of the transportation system, including walking, biking, driving, et cetera. Improve the emergency response and clearance times. Implement and maintain ITS technology and strategies that proactively work to prevent incidents from occurring. So it is evident that we are, those three goals are focusing on preventing or addressing safety on, or collisions, prevent, technology that prevents police, incident from happening and collisions, and also reducing emergency response time. To improve the efficiency of the transportation system, the top three objectives identified are to prioritize transit-friendly projects that are safe, accessible, equitable, and convenient transportation options for all the users. Anticipate and plan for future growth by leveraging technology. And reduce environmental impacts and encourage alternate modes, in particular those modes that reduce the single occupant vehicle trips. For our third goal of providing accurate traveler information, the three objectives identified are to obtain, maintain, and provide city-owned traveler information, including advanced and real-time information about construction and work zones, real-time incident information, real-time road condition, and weather, and weather information at key locations that we know that already have issues. Adapt and automate information to traveler information media outlets based on the needs and tendencies of users. Provide city-managed information to frequently used providers, like, for example, Waze, Google Map, and these other applications. Develop, for the goal to develop and deploy cost-efficient ITS infrastructure, the top objectives identified were to deploy technology that is flexible, scalable, and integrates easily with existing and planned infrastructure improvements. Plan, procure, and deploy technology with high benefit-to-cost ratio, recognizing staff responsibilities and the time to operate the ITS solutions. Deploy sustainable technology that, that can be maintained over the years, considering the cost for maintenance and replacing equipment as well. For our fifth goal of integrating city ITS projects with regional partners, the objectives identified are to continue and coordinate, to continue to coordinate and integrate projects with other agencies. Promote the interoperability of regional ITS systems and devices to effectively manage the system across jurisdictions. Participate in collaborative opportunities to align a region-wide ITS vision following the completion of the ITS plan. Our sixth, sixth goal of monitoring the transportation performance measure, the top objectives identified are to collect and record transportation data, such as traffic volume, speed, loop occupancy, and incident data. Maintain a GIS database of the ITS equipment. Procure transportation data management systems for collecting, storing, analyzing, and deploying transportation data performance measures to, and provide, an example for that is an app, dashboard application that, those that provide that information. After we get the final objectives for the ITS plan, we will, the next step will be to provide that list of projects and strategies for ITS implementation. These projects and strategies will be, will basically consist, consist of near-term projects that will align with the selected city objectives. Those projects will be the space in between one and through, and five-year implementation. It'll, the, also the strategies will also consider staffing requirements and planning level, planning level cost estimates for each project. The list of projects and proposed strategies will be presented again for the Transportation Advisory Board review, and we estimate that we do that in, at the beginning of the year in January, and then to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee for their review later in, in February. After doing that, we will be presenting an ITS plan draft for City Council review, and we estimate that that will be occurring in spring of 2023. And the ultimate goal would be to include the selection of projects and strategies in the next side, in the next cycle of six-year CIB process. And just to go back to the direction that the, that we will be asking for the, from the committee is to, to state what are the top transportation technology objectives that the city should address for each ITS plan goal? And should the city prioritize additional objectives? And as needed, I can go back to the tables of the goals and objectives as, as we receive your direction.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We'll go to questions from the committee first, and then open it up for a public comment, and then the committee members will go ahead and comment and try to give some direction as we go. I'll go ahead and open with the first question. Thank you for that in-depth presentation. It's very clear that a lot of thought has been put into this, and that we really want to try to do it right as we go forward. The question I had concerned, objective number five, or goal number five, integrate ITS projects with regional partners. Can you give me a little bit of information? Are, are other regional partners actually doing anything like this, such that we can plug in with them and actually integrate our systems? Or are they ahead of us or behind us? I don't really have a good feel whether Washdod and Samamish, just, let's just take those two, are doing anything in this area, and how we would integrate and plug in to their system.
Yes, I have a couple examples, although I don't have the specific technical way of how they work, but I have a couple of samples of cities that are currently coordinating with Washdod, and, and actually, some, the city of Samamish, with their extension of the ITS project, the second phase of the ITS project, included their connection to the, what they call the traffic buster system on 202, on 202, I think the highway is 202, the one north goes east-west, that, those signals that are owned and operated by Washdod. And with the extension of the fiber connection from 202, Washdod's signals to Samamish, they were able to get that connection into the Washdod traffic buster system. With, also, the city of Redmond also has some coordination with Washdod as well with their signals. And we did a little bit of research on, when we started our conversations with Washdod on what we had done in the past, and we found a, in, we, after over 15 years ago, there was a, some coordination between Isacua and Washdod, where we, we used to be able to access their system for signals and, that are inside the city that are owned with, from Washdod, and vice versa. and vice versa, they could access our system as well. It was, it was like on an as-needed basis, where they would coordinate the timings, and if we, for specific scenarios, we needed to adjust WashDOT's signals, we were able to do that at some point. The systems at this point have changed, and it is my understanding that when both systems changed, we lost that connection, and we don't, we don't do that any longer. But that's, that's another option, that's one option we're integrating with city, and coordination with other agencies could help, like, try to get back to that coordination. And that is one, like, the simplest ways. There are others where we could, our technologies could, could talk to each other, have that connectivity between them. But an easy way without investing with other jurisdictions would be having that ability to connect with, with, for example, WashDOT. I, I know it could be very difficult at this moment, like, having that specific ability to change other jurisdictions' timings, for example. But back at the, on the memo of understanding that we saw before, that we had in the past, it could, it was an agreement where we would let them know that, that we wanted to do, that there must have had some communication between them, so that there was that confidence of doing that changes. But they, it was, it was a very well-communicated effort when we determined a need, we would let WashDOT know that we were doing the change, and there was, and why we were doing the changes, and there was this flexibility of changing the traffic signal timings for a specific, particular need.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to goal number one, improve the safety and security of the transportation system. Last night, in our council meeting, we approved a set of safety improvements that would keep pedestrians a little more safe as they're crossing the street, and some other improvements along the way. Could you comment a little bit on how goal number one will increase the walkability of our city, and the ability for all people to take those alternate routes and take those alternate modes of transportation instead of getting into a car?
One way, although this could get a little bit away from this and talk more about transit projects, which is on the second one, but one way I can think about, and is specific to transit, is to provide or prepare our equipment, our signals, to be ready for transit signal priority. That is something, that is an alternative that we don't have in the city, and for, in doing that, there would be a process of deciding on what, what we have, what do we want. There would be a process of deciding what do we have, that we want to provide for that traffic signal, transit signal priority, would be simply prioritizing the signal entirely, or it would be a dedicated, something like a phase dedicated to the transit signal priorities. So there are different ways, but that is one option that I can think of that would make transit more appealing to, to be used instead of vehicle traveling.
Okay, thank you. And in the first objective, you talk about avoiding near-miss collisions and crashes, and you want to make sure that the transportation system for cars, walking and biking, you know, don't kind of interact in a way that's going to cause an accident, in essence. In Bellevue, when I'm walking around along Northeast Eighth, the signal will give a pedestrian priority. In other words, it's going to turn to a walk sign five or 10 seconds before the green light goes on, so that the pedestrians get kind of a head start, and then they don't get hit on that right-hand turn for drivers that might not be paying attention as they're pedestrians in the, in the crosswalk. Are we considering doing any of those type of pedestrian kind of priority tweaks to our system as well?
We can consider them. When, when we talk about identifying near-miss collisions, are more of providing a platform that would identify those locations where more susceptible of, of incidents from occurring. Pedestrian timing, it's another, it's separate from that specifically, but that is, that is also considered an I T S solution that we can provide. I think the term, the term is delay, signal delay, pedestrian signal delay, but yes, I am, I, I know which one it is. And also, the city of Bellevue, I wanted to mention, the city of Bellevue is actually testing, or have already a pilot, a, of, including a platform that identifies near-miss collisions at signalized intersections. And I think the city of Seattle as well.
Great, thank you. I'll see if there are other questions from committee members on this. Councilmember DeMichele.
So Isabel, let's go back to the survey, because I noticed that the Transportation Advisory Board had some questions about, it was surprising to read the results, because other surveys that we've done, safety has always been number one, and also, the environment was very small compared to its place, you know, in our sensibility in terms of plannings and so forth. So I noticed that the tab kind of questioned the results, and, and I just was wondering if you want to tell us a little bit more. Was this an online survey? Did they come to the website to take the survey? And was there any kind of demographic information gathered, and those kinds of information about the survey itself?
Yes, there was some, I did not present the demographics, but there was some demographics gathered from the survey responders. The way that we released is with the community, ESACWA Insider, we released that and provided a link on the emails, so community that were signed up for these emails would provide input on their surveys. And you had mentioned that, yes, it is odd that safety signals is not, but the, the way we presented is as the transportation and data technology that we should invest in on. And there's these different alternatives, and traveler information seemed to be the one most important for, that the data most important for responders to get. But then, when we provided information on performance metric and, and performance measures and subdivided that, for the performance measures and subdivided that, then, then safety data was all, the safety-specific ones was visibly the, the, one of the highest that they wanted to consider with the signals. Then for the environmental impact, we, it could be surprising as well, but we can also relate that in terms of I T S, we can get benefits, side benefits, environmental side benefits, but it could become a little bit difficult to find specific I T S solutions that are specific to environmental. Yeah, so that, that was one that we not necessarily provided a lot of options in terms of, of, of technology solutions, because it would, it could be more of a side, of a side benefit that we can get from other technologies that are mainly to address other of, of other areas.
And then, I was too, was interested in this near-miss collisions. Can you just, what is a near-miss? Is that like a car almost hitting a pedestrian? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, in Bellevue, they're, they're monitoring that with cameras, and, okay.
Yes, they are using cameras and online, I can't say, it's an online platform that they would identify the locations that most near, the most near collisions are occurring, and that way, that gives the city an idea where are the areas that we, that, that, that we think that's safety, we should be providing safety improvements to, related on, to signals.
I just, you know, I, it was kind of, I just don't think that most pedestrians, if they almost got hit, they probably don't report that to anybody, and so I was just wondering how we were going to gather that information, so. And then, my last question, I saw a terminology that I'd never seen before. What is a loop occupancy?
Oh, that's for the detection, the detection, the occupancy of the loops, and where, I'm trying to find where was.
It's under goal number five, or no, goal number six, monitor transportation performance measures, and it says, collect and record transportation data, such as traffic volume, speed, loop occupancy, and incident data. And I, I had no idea what loop occupancy was.
It has to do with the vehicle density, the traffic density, based on the, yeah, the loop occupancy, a way to measure the, the density of traffic on a corridor.
Ah, okay, thank you. All right, that's, I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Just a really quick one, thank you. I just want to clarify next steps, and kind of long-term next steps, too. So, we're determining these most important objectives. With that, staff and the administration will then come back with a list of projects and strategies to implement the I T S plan, based on those prioritized objectives. Then we'll actually implement the plan, and we'll have different data collection or strategies happening. And then with that data that's coming back, that might inform even more capital projects or new strategies in the future, right? So it's kind of like constantly being used as a loop to inform new policy and stuff, right?
Yes. And, and the idea of, we, we are very thankful that the council had chosen to re, have again the traffic signal operations engineer position, but the idea is that we can continue the I T S program. It doesn't, as, as we start identifying projects within each cycle of the six C I P, we continue to identify I T S projects that we can invest on, or, or improvements that we can work on.
Okay. I believe that concludes the question portion of the meeting from the members of the committee. We'll now open it up to members of the audience, or anyone online that would like to make public comment on this subject. Deputy Clerk, do we have anyone online?
Chair Joe, we have no virtual attendees at this moment.
And no one has signed up in the room for public comment as well? Do we have some of them that would like to come up for public comment? Please come forward, yes. Identify yourself, and then go ahead.
Push the red, or the button there at the bottom. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Erica Boyd. I'm a member of the Transportation Advisory Board. I'm your designated member tonight. I think we're trying to cycle through the whole board, but I don't know if I'm supposed to make public comment, but if it's helpful for some context for this, we had a really hard time, I think, understanding the nuance between some of these objectives. And then, Isabel touched on it, it was brought up, but the, we were concerned about the, I think just some of the demographics, and like the snapshot of the survey that was put out, it seemed like a pretty small sample size, and then, yeah, it just didn't seem reflective, I think, like Councilmember DeMichele said, of some of the historical patterns and other surveys regarding similar topics, so, yeah. Thank you.
Erica Boyd, thank you for your service on the tab, and it's volunteer people like you that keep us going, and I appreciate you coming out tonight and making a public comment. Anyone else that would like to make public comment? All right, I'll close the public comment portion, and then we'll go ahead and move on to a discussion portion of this item. So, is there anyone that would like to go first with their thoughts and comments? Deputy Counsel President Paul.
All right, I guess I'll go first. I don't know. So, I have some general comments. It does seem like the highest priority objectives are those most concerning life, safety, information collection, asset management, and multi, multimodal mobility options, which does seem right to me. The caveat to that is, you know, I have the same concern that, that Tab had. We're policymakers here with absolutely no technical background in this space, so I'm feeling kind of limited and compelled to want to follow the lead of subject matter experts, like yourself. But I do think determining alignment with objectives and that future upcoming list of projects and strategies does seem like a worthwhile policy decision for council to be involved in, and I think that's appropriate. I also think the mission statement proposal is very much in our wheelhouse, but I think that's very much in line with our strategic mobility goals. Our strategic plan even calls out in particular, driving efficiencies in the mobility system, which is called out in the I T S plan, or in some of these, in the agenda packet for tonight. So I guess my overall comments are, sure, the objectives seem like they're in alignment with our core strategies, but I also wouldn't know if they weren't necessarily based on my background. I'm curious what other council members, how other council members are showing up in this space, too, but that's how I'm thinking. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
Yeah, I agree completely, and thank you, Erica, for your comments, because I was struggling with the same issues. I think there's a lot of nuance here. There's some places where there might even be overlap between some of the objectives and the way that they're written, and you think, well, that could maybe go there, and, but that's not our job tonight to, to edit, so. Yeah, I was kind of struggling with, they, they all look like great objectives, so how would we order them, especially, as Councilmember Hall said, without the technical data, you know, given to us? And even then, maybe we wouldn't understand it, so, because that's really kind of expertise that we don't have as council members, so. I think that we've got some, I think the goals are absolutely right on. I think those goals are absolutely right on, so, but I don't know exactly where to go when it comes to prioritizing the objectives as a council member. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for those comments. I really appreciate the fact that a great deal of thought has been put into this, and it's going to be an iterative, iterative process, as Council, Deputy Counsel President Hall pointed out. We're going to see what works and try something, and build on what works, and then learn from that, and then go on to the next solution after that. So, from my point of view... So, from my point of view, I don't think we're going to get all six of them done, the first swipe through, but we're going to get some of them done along the way, learn what works, and learn why it works in a particular area in our city, and then do another one after that, and another one after that, and hopefully start improving the overall flow of traffic in our city, the safety of pedestrians, and the ability for safe biking and walking through the city as we go forward, and also increase our responses to emergency situations so we can clear those roads out when there is an accident, so we don't end up with a three-hour backup, you know, going through our city, but we're able to quickly see it, address it, take care of it along the way. So, I really appreciate the thought that's been put into this. I think, from my point of view, goal number five is probably farther down on the list. I would even maybe make it six, in the sense that I think from the information that I have, we are ahead of our other partners around. WashDOT wants to keep their lights, because the way they prioritize them, they try to make sure that there's no backup on 90 as it goes. So, they try to increase the stream of traffic going through, and that decreases the seriousness of accidents on 90. So, I don't think that we're going to have much success negotiating with them, or kind of working an agreement out. I may be wrong, and I would like to be pleasantly surprised, but from my point of view, again, our system that we develop kind of needs to be serving our citizens in the best way possible, and I don't think that Siamish is ready to come down the hill and connect with us, and WashDOT is kind of set in their ways in terms of what they would like to do, is my impression. But I do see that our, Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator, would like to probably make a comment on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe, this is Andrea Snyder. I actually was hoping to make a comment to address the previous comments that Deputy Council President made, and Councilmember DeMichele made, if that's all right.
Please do.
Okay, great, thank you. With this project, there are so many goals the city has with our transportation system. And anytime we start talking about transportation, it becomes incredibly complex very quickly, with lots of things that we want to do. And really, I think the point of tonight is to be able to kind of narrow down. This system, one system can't solve everything, it can't solve everything at once, right? To your point, Councilmember Joe, of, you know, let's take things kind of incrementally and make improvements. And so, the goal of tonight is really to figure out, do we have these priorities correct? Are these the things, given all of our aspirations, all the things that we want, a transportation system and technology that helps govern our transportation system, all these things that we want to accomplish, are these the right ones? If we had an ITS plan that addressed all of these objectives, would you think that that is successful? Or are we missing something? And so, in this list of goals, and this list of objectives that you see before you this evening, are there glaring holes that you're like, well, wait a second, if we don't address this one thing, we're really going to be missing the mark? And so, that's really the question for you this evening, is wondering, as we establish the scope of our system, and come up with recommendations for technologies for us to adopt, are these the right objectives for us to be hitting initially, or are we missing something really important? So that, I think, is the overarching goal for tonight. And I hope that's helpful as you narrow down, because as you stated, it's going to get real technical real quick. And so we want to make sure that we're evaluating the technologies, that we're looking at these gaps in our intersections, in our transportation grid, according to the right priorities and objectives.
Thank you very much. So, I'll just finish my comment. I think that I would prioritize five a little bit less than even where it is now. Again, I don't think our partners are ready to necessarily have that relationship. It's not us, it's them, kind of thing, right now. But the other thing I would comment on is that I think that number three, provide accurate traveler information, is, the burden is kind of taken up by the internet for us, in a lot of ways, in the sense that if I'm driving and I am going down Newport and I'm stuck, oftentimes I can look on Issaquah's Twitter feed, or I can look on their website for an update, or there's a WashDOT update in terms of there's a crash on an intersection that's backing everything up and having repercussions all the way to Newport. So, it would be nice if we're able to give real-time transportation information out there, but from my point of view, a lot of that is put out through the social media avenues and pipeline that's there already, so I think it's a little bit less of a priority. I would prioritize one and two first, and then get those done well, and figure out how it's been working, how we can improve it from there. But that's my initial thought on things. Deputy President, Deputy Counsel President Hall, do you have a comment?
Maybe, so I'll just say it. I mean, the only other thing, and I don't know if it's appropriate in this conversation or not, that I don't see bubbling up, that has bubbled up in all of our conversations about mobility around town, whether it was during the development of the Mobility Master Plan, or even before that, is the goal of residents' ability to move around town, ease of movement around town, not necessarily just improving movement or improving mobility, but improving the ease of mobility around town, and focusing on, I think the last time ITS came up to us, we talked about trying to prioritize movement in town as opposed to movement through town. I don't know how or where that might show up in this, but that might need to be a priority that we are mindful of, too, in this.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So, going back to goal number three, and again, here's where I would probably need a lot more technical information to really understand what the possibilities might be. I will just say that when I'm driving up the Issaquah-Hobart Road, and the sign that's out there, you know, construction coming, or whatever, is really helpful. So I'm thinking, yes, Twitter, we can get information in general from Twitter, and GPS, and all kinds of things, but it is helpful as a road user, a driver, to know specifically that something's going on in Issaquah. And so, that's kind of what I was thinking when I was reading this third goal, and it was the top, it was the top thing for the survey that people said would help them, and so I'm thinking, well, that's really intriguing. It would be kind of interesting to do maybe some more in-depth interviewing to find out what that really meant, was this, you know, why did that one rise to the top all of a sudden? But, so, I think it depends on how that technology might be distributed around the community, and how we might help people. The other thing I do know, when I was with King County, is that when construction projects are going on and are not communicated with other agencies, it could be quite disastrous. And so, again, maybe there was some thinking there, that maybe the city needs to do a better job of communicating construction to both drivers and agencies. I think I'd need a little bit more in-depth information to really be able to understand that one, but I think there's a nugget there of something that maybe we could be doing better.
Yeah, I think my thought on that was, we already have the big signs as you come into town from the south, and as you're coming down the plateau, that tell you that something's going on. And so, my comment was, I don't think we need to put a lot of effort into really improving those, I think we have those. And in terms of WashDOT on 90, they're putting those signs out there because they're required, but that's not a city burden, so it wouldn't necessarily be part of this plan. I think we do a pretty good job with construction in town. Don't ask my kids about Second Avenue at all, but it was out there that there was construction, there was going to be paving there, there were going to be delays, and we published that and put that out there as much as we could. So for city projects, we do a pretty good job in town putting up the construction signs, and so my thought is that we don't necessarily need to prioritize it as high as one and two, but that was kind of the basis of my comment there. Other thoughts or discussion? Oh, go ahead, Andrea Snyder.
Thank you, this is Andrea. Just something for your consideration, and thank you so much for your feedback regarding how we're currently doing with planned construction and planned activities in the roadway. We know from our user data that one of our most popular features we offer on our website are the traffic cams and webcams in a snow event or a flood event. And that's because drivers are craving information about what's going on right now on this steep hill, can I get through? And so, as we look at goal number three and the objectives under it, real-time information, sure, about construction, but if there's incidents, if there's accidents, if there's a tree limb that's down on the road, or a tree that's on the road that happened in an emergency that we're trying to address, getting that signage up in advance is something that's very difficult to do as we're responding in emergencies. And so, but that's something that perhaps we could have a system help us address, and make it easier to give drivers advance warning. So, if they're trying to get home after a long day of work, and we know that Newport is closed, or that Maple is closed, we can perhaps provide signage in advance, alerting them to that fact, for these incidents that just arise, that aren't planned. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was something that you were considering as well, as you debate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or thoughts? Go ahead, Councilmember DeMichele.
Maybe a hologram on the Issaquah-Hobart Road, beamed out to the Issaquah-Hobart Road. We have to think really far out on technology, okay?
Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Last thing is just a question, since it does seem like we've gotten through this kind of quickly. Isabel, right, you know, you're a subject matter expert in this space. Are we, would you have expected us to provide any other feedback that we haven't tonight? Is there anything that has been surprising to you that, you know, that we didn't discuss tonight?
No, not really. The one thing that I would get from the committee on specifically is, or more importantly, is what if we are missing something that we should be prioritizing? And that is, that is something that we have heard so far from your comments, and things to consider as we move along with the ITS plan.
So if I were to summarize, it sounds like the committee is supportive of the project, the committee is supportive of, the goals are there, there's some consideration that we'd like the administration to take in terms of how they're ranked, or how they might fall into place, that comments have been given, and some concern about walkability and mobility within the city for our citizens as they try to get around during the high-traffic times in our city along the way. Does that seem to summarize our thoughts and items, or anything that we've kind of missed? Okay? Has the administration gotten everything that they need?
Yes, I believe we have, thank you so much. And I would add to the list that you summarized, we heard, you know, this coordination with other jurisdictions, that maybe that's important, but maybe let's not spend too much time on that at risk of some of the other goals and objectives. Wanted to make sure you know that we heard that one as well. And then, really looking at this information, and how much information, what kind of information we provide to travelers, what that looks like, maybe diving a little bit deeper into that as we move forward, looking at examining different technologies that we could possibly use. So, thank you very much.
Fantastic. Isabel Diaz, thank you so much for the presentation tonight, and we will now go on to our next item on the agenda, which is announcements under number five. Any announcements? Okay. That takes us to number six, and we are to adjournment at 7:35 PM. Thank you to the committee members for an efficient meeting this night, tonight.